Is that is not normally the sign for it's working fine.
Right, real life everybody's. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July meeting of the Planning Committee, Buckinghamshire Council. We do have fifteen minutes left in before the meeting. Do we have any public speakers? No, thank you, Laura. In that case, we proceed with the meeting. First of all, apologies for absence. There are no apologies, perhaps. Decredent of interest. Do you receive any declarations of personal or individual interest? Consideration on this agenda. It's been normal when one of the council staff, because he's a member of the North Buckland area.
The one that doesn't discuss anything. I mean, just going to say anything to button.
Minutes of the nineteenth of June still a work in progress and we've resented at the next meeting. Buckinghamshire local plan received any updates? Peter isn't there tonight? Is there anything? Either we wish to add?
I'm just thinking, so you just sent me an email that. And then nothing can be done, so I'm sorry, maybe not going to move to you, so you know, it is probably a long time after.
Yeah.
So, yeah, quarter meetings, lots of work happening and lots of progress.
What I can report is some last Monday before the council meeting, we had a fairly comprehensive design code meeting. I'm just working out how we go forward, keying in the national design code of the local ones. Well, Roger unfortunately couldn't be there, but. There will be a report coming on that one. Need to let our consultants take a very, very good meeting and we've got.
Roger did come to the other team, Steve, but she's been away for quite a long time.
Been to others, yeah. But we've got a lot more monthly meetings coming up yet soon. By October, we should more or less be there to start right on the main plan. So, going well. Action reports, you've all had action reports on the lifting pattern. I would rate a couple of points. You've completed the site committee, we've been asking about why some applications go to that and others to the. More direct signing committee, there is a letter from Steve Banbrick on item, it's five solid two, not seven point two on. Agenda, please note. Section one oh six matters, it was briefed by the Shire councillors to the July meeting, invitations were sent out. I think town clerk matters are rather overtaken now because there's going to be a presentation tomorrow at a short, a very short called. Down in parish update meeting, which the possibility is still being introduced sooner rather than later into North Bucks will be discussed.
That's a suggestion, but I'll say we're telling you to tomorrow.
Thank you. Year of the tree, still no response back from the insurer. Which is extraordinary, sorry.
John said there's a parish and town council meeting tomorrow.
The quarterly meeting.
It's not the forum, it's what they're calling an update. They only invited us this morning to a meeting tomorrow, so.
Who, sorry, who was invited?
That can be on the agenda towards the end, so.
Who was invited?
Well, the regular attenders, myself, Anthony.
Okay, so, well, you know, this was the flyer, my.
No, this is the planning one, the planning.
Oh, the planning, okay, sorry. I'm going to sleep, sorry.
Thank you. So, I think the insurers.
No, and I did, I have approached the ADIV as well and had no response.
Not good, is it? The climate list, we're looking into that still, not really.
Yes, I have got some additional major ones to make.
Okay.
It's just admin stuff, I actually got licence numbers for all of them. You could have been around these things.
And then finally, the walking to town and parish meetings, it was. It did look as if we're going to have to start paying to go to these, but in fact, that one, the planning meeting, it's for the training.
Yeah, you sort of more walk over the. That we invited the Shire councillors to meet. How many actually still haven't come? It's, and they're not coming now, presumably. We thought we'd have them here to talk to us about section one oh six. It wasn't just to do with there. It was to do with the whole way that the council did with the section one oh six and things that we were interested in up or. I'm quite surprised we didn't take that up and let them come and tell us everything they know.
I've had apologies, people are unable to make it. They do want to have a discussion about it in the form of a chat, which I think could be very disruptive, but that obviously is a conversation.
An informal chat? I thought we asked them to come here, that's.
And I did invite them and I've had apologies for various reasons, people come.
I don't think we agree for an informal chat. We didn't come here and have an informal chat, but they were expected to come to committee. I'm saying, you know, I'm here, but that's because of my choice, but I think that we need to reinforce that we asked me, we've got a lot of work to do. On the Buckingham neighbourhood plan. In respect of what you're told tomorrow, which I probably didn't know what you were told tomorrow. I won't preempt that. I think that we need to build a working relationship with them. Because when we put together a plan. How a section one oh six works and whatever. I'm surprised they don't want to be here. This town represents about thirteen thousand people now, which is a large part of the electorate. I'm surprised they wouldn't be here. So, I would suppose that we re-admission that invite. And I wouldn't like to hear that there's been an informal discussion. I think it's for the councillors here to be able to ask questions and get answers and find ways forward.
Thank you, Rob. Have a second for that. John, second me.
You want to speak, John? Yeah, just, I agree with all of that, but I would like to raise as well on escape park. So, when you're ready, always.
Okay. Is there a lot to speak on this story particularly about it?
Yeah, I think considering a couple of them are town councillors as well. You know, I can't see a reason why they wouldn't want to come to a public event.
So, you'll prefer us to re-invite them to the next meeting, kind of thing.
Don't second it back, so, yeah. I don't think it's ever, never didn't want to be invited, yeah.
I would just say that as well, we've done this, actually four, and now six Shire councillors are members of this council as well. So, yeah, I fully hold your points with the petition at the end of the council.
Thank you. Anyone else to put to the vote? All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you. John?
Yeah, I've been in contact with the cabinet member of the Shire council, find out what's happening about the skate park. Is it actually being scheduled? It's meant to be started, the work started at the end of this morning. There's no obvious sign of it happening yet, but here's what we have to do and we'll go back to it. So, my unit is wanting everybody back to do this, obviously. I did raise a deal some months ago about whether the Shire council would be willing to look into having a tenant escape park. And he mentioned about back to me on that, so we'll tell the answer back. And I still look at that issue a bit for that, but we're now too late to get that organised, although it did occur to me that the actual. Four playground outside. The school that I now can remember the name of on Shandos Road. Good, good, Roger, it would make us a little venue, because you can still have the school, that would be. That would be secure and just use that sort of car parking area for the skate park during the summer holidays. And there are certainly a number of tented skate parks as well. I think we've lost, we've lost money for that, really.
We've got the school break up, it's Friday, don't they?
Maybe, yeah, yeah, sorry, guys, I did raise it within back at the beginning of May, but. The conversation didn't go any further with that. I hope that it's going off to sort it out. And, you know, it would be a lovely surprise to be honest, it's near town, but. Okay.
So, thank you for evidence on that, John. And Roger?
Just thank you, John, for raising that again. Hopefully, we'll raise it one day that it's being constructed and one day that it's finished. I'm not sure. Probably started. Just for information, you will know that we were going to organise a event, but we couldn't organise an event because they were scheduled to do the. Skate park in that week, which is a premise to where you come from. I think this can't persist for another year. It's not acceptable. I know when I was down there with Lisa and your good self, the feeling from young people, three years ago now. When they were very frustrated. That every generation of councillors has promised something and never delivered it. It seemed to be going down the same road of promising young people something and never delivering it, and they lose. Faithfulness, really, but we aren't the councils, town councils, not the councils who's not delivering. I think that that's something that we need to. With chairman's agreement. With the town clerk to ask to pursue, to find out if they are going to start this summer and if not, why not? So that. Because you have tried, John, to your credit, we do need to, I mean, I can go and ask questions, that's fine for me, but this is the town councils. Yeah, and I think we need to go and find out because every member of the town council will be interested in that.
Yeah, I think we can negative participation tomorrow, yeah.
Thank you, Bob. Anything else on action list? No, item five two postponed from the nineteenth of June because of the shortage of time. There's a letter back from Steve Banbrick. Who is the director of planning. It's a very comprehensive reply, but he does still fully avoid any mentions of call-ins, which is one of our. Weapons in this, and I think this letter just again underlines how important it is that. Our Shire councillors support us when we want to be making a call-in. I think, John?
Yeah, that also underlines how powerful the chief planning officer is as well. In his discretion, or her, it was somebody else. The planning officer's discretion as to whether something does or doesn't go and to which committee it goes to. I would say that we want to put in a kind of marker. And write and say, we would want to be involved in any review, future review of the constitution around these matters. So, for example, I would be suggesting that in the future, that all applications are at least first dealt with by the local area planning committees. And if that committee chooses to refer it to the strategic committee, then that would be a good place, but not to have it in some kind of planning. That's what I'd be suggesting. I think we'll stay in the ground and say that this council in particular would like to be closely enrolled in the next review, which we oversee. Of the constitution of the Shire council with respect to that.
You're making out your proposal, John?
I am.
Thank you. Now, have a second of gliss, yeah, Lisa, thank you. Robin, you wish to speak?
I just, I perfectly understand the rationale behind that and I'll support it. What I am understanding is the constitution will have to be, I've had numerous conversations about call-ins in the past. That the constitution will have to be amended now, unless they're going to apply constitution differently in Buckingham than they are across Buckinghamshire. Because some of the wards will be with single members, some of the wards in the new council will be double members. So, they'll have to apply the constitution differently. I hope we go back to the position that used to be the district council's position. Planning authority, which was one member could call an application in. Because it isn't working. Three members call an application in for all the obvious reasons with the large development on the, on the. Next to Whitepack and, and having trouble, which haven't had an acknowledgement of a call-in due to another application. At the moment, where I had to seek some advice and actually point out that I had got a right to call it in and I haven't had a response back to that yet. So, I think it's quite concerning. And I think that it's call-ins, as was advised by the legal officer in the training session to planning. A call-in is not a predetermination of an application. It is merely believing that an application should go to a committee to be determined because in the public interest. And I think people are having difficulty understanding what that is. You know, so I do think it's the right thing. I think the answer will come back, not as you want it, but I think it's still a question worth asking.
I think we could also add to that, that the Shire members' planning handbook also is quite clear that any. Lord member can call in any application anywhere in the county. Doesn't just have to be in their own warrant. That is set out in the book. Lisa?
Thank you. Yeah, picking up from what John said, really, that it's quite clear in here that they. Rely on their delegated powers and are quite proud of the fact that they did ninety-seven percent of delegated work. And I find that. Interesting because I don't think the public know that the people that they're voting for. Are not the ones that are deciding planning applications. And I think they'd be quite surprised at that because, you know. Where we sit here because we're elected to be the voice of the residents. And we let those down at the Shire council for the same reason, and then find that it's not actually the Shire councillors that are having. Any say so at all, so, yeah.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else on that? We've got the proposal and John, which is seconded by Lisa. All those in favour? That's you, unanimous as well. Thank you. Sorry, I'm blocking, not frankly.
No, that's fine, you can see better than me, I'm struggling a little bit to say that.
Right, so next on the list is planning applications. Not so many tonight, fortunately, as last, last meeting. First of all, number one on the agenda is forty-three tree builds. This was a permitted development rights application, but it was considered to be too big. Had to be made as an application. It's a powertrain application for erection of a rear conservatory. The planning notices have been displayed. Martin?
My only reservation about this is twenty centimetres is no good to manual base.
It's that wide.
Exactly. I mean, you can't get a ladder in there, and I doubt whether that's taken from the guttering point. It'll be taken from. The wall, so there'll be an overhang at the top. So, I don't think it should go that way. I think it's paramount to having problems, damp, maintenance, no. There's my thoughts on that.
The gap is actually twenty centimetres on each side of the conservatory to wooden fences.
Yeah.
How are you going to do a paint them and protect the fences? Of all of the neighbour, depends on whose fence it is.
Well, one of them will be there bent because the other one won't be.
And how is you going to be able to do that?
And it's a precedent, if the other person inputs up a conservatory, what's it, for instance, that's, you know, you've got no way of going in there, so. I think it's, it's on a slippery slope.
I had one application like this on Page Hill, which was conservatory against a neighbour's wall, and there's even less of a gap. Yeah, it was in the village, so, yeah. And we lost, we lost that one, but let's have another go. Well, okay. So, Martin, you're going to recommend that we propose this?
I am.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second, Andy, thank you very much. That's right.
I'm slipping off, aren't I? Normally, I can pose it. As we've got a range of your applications tonight, let's, let's put it to the floor. So, thank you, Martin. Posted and seconded. Anyone else wish to speak on this? All those in favour of opposing it? Oh, yeah, me as well. Okay.
I'm staying.
You're staying?
I'm staying.
Item two, eighteen Panda Road, which is in Buck Rumblet Field, certificate of all list of proposed garage conversions. We've all seen Catherine's report on this. The thing that jumps out is a fortified bedroomed house. And it's only got. To declare the parking spaces and they're going to convert the garage into. Office and sort of games rooms, et cetera, et cetera. The. County standard for four or five bedroomed houses is three parking spaces. One concern on this is you'll notice from her report, it is right opposite site J. Which has yet to be developed, and when that's developed, this road will become even busier. So, what the members think? John?
Buckinghamshire certainly thought the parking was a issue. And also, I mean, it would set wrong bad precedent. I mean, if all the houses on that street started to be something similar. Think of the on-street parking, it's a tricky one, but really, we feel that it should be opposed on parking grounds.
Thank you. Any other members have a screen? In that case, I will propose, we propose this on, as Carolyn said, on parking grounds. Seconded, Anthony seconded. All those in favour? Thank you. Right, item three, twenty thirteen Market Hill. The former M and S building, which as you all know by now is becoming.
Never mind. But we know where it is anyway.
The becoming Verdetto Lounge, which is sister shop to the One and Two, which. The plans are held, we believe, is identical and in an identical setting, despite the fact we're. Conservation area in a market town, where as the hell everyone is pedestrianised there for that. This display of new facial signage is. One of the, the main sign, in fact, is going to be internally lit, which goes against the conservation area policies. Andy?
Is the conservation area this? Because it's got pink, dusky pink windows. Brain, really?
It's not listed.
Oh, no, this is the, in the conservation.
It's a recent building, essentially.
So, those of you who were awake on Saturday when the market was closed because of the winds will notice that they were working. Inside the building, they had a lot of rubbish they're bringing out into the front through their open doors there.
I am not sure I have any strong objections to the dusky pink, but the internally lit sign would be a concern. I think because that is not in keeping with what anybody else does, you know, a bit of colour in the window framing, you know, maybe that's not, that's not a criminal offence, but.
It is only the frames.
It's only the frames, yes, and presumably not the windows themselves. That'd be rather unusual, wouldn't it?
You also noticed on the plan that Catherine, on Catherine's report, that it queried the fire door. Now, we have had an application in today on the meeting for that fire door. Then Catherine's handed to me. Normally, this would have to wait until the next meeting, it should be at the end of August, so we're going to put it to members. If everyone was happy, we would, if we'd minded to approve the application with the reservations, but when we're signed into, we approved the.
I would say, Chair, it's not something the committee can't vote to, we are standing orders, but my view on it is that the actual diagram was in the original paperwork. So, we're adding or changing anything. It is there, so, guys.
So, you can see no reason that we shouldn't consider it.
My advice is that it was in the original paperwork. You've had it for your three clear days that you need in order to make a consideration, and therefore you can consider it. I'm a bit adaptive that you can't, but sort of overall standing orders, so.
Yeah, but it's okay to know.
I, yeah, I think this is, I'm happy to listen to Catherine, but I think that the paperwork is in the folder, you've had it, and there is nothing in there.
How do members feel?
Yeah, sure.
I personally, I think more, more fire safety measures, the better, so. But, yeah, I'd be supportive of.
Good, thank you very much. Frank?
Thank you, Karen. No, no, it is fine, we're sure. I was just going to say that it does say in the paperwork that I'm checking this needs, if this needs permission, therefore that's the update that's come through today that. They haven't applied permission for it, so I have no, no reason to not. Include that in with the rest of our discussion.
Thank you very much. Carolyn?
I've just been asking, they can make details of the materials of the fire door. Obviously, they've got to have fire. Supposedly, it's a heavy metal. That was so, yeah, yeah. I just wondered if there were any details about it.
There are some details.
Yeah.
The victim at the front of the shop remain. This is an additional one.
Yes, I know, yeah.
But, yes, there are, there are details, but. You know, my current day.
There doesn't need to be.
Basically, you've got basic details. It is a fire door, it is going to be built part-time standard, so it can be used by disabled people. It's going to be dark during the big frame. It would be dark in blends of total radiation. Absolutely, yeah, so to talk of front, it's dark, very dark.
So, we're taking this in two parts basically now, because one is the signage, the other is the fire door. Shall we do the fire door first? All those in favour? Thank you. That was my proposal, Anthony's seconding, wasn't it? Now, regarding the signage, obviously, it doesn't meet the conservation area policies requirements because of the internally lit fascia. So, I would propose that we oppose that until they come back with a signage that. That recognises the Buckingham neighbourhood plan and the conservation area. Seconded by Anthony. If you wish to speak on it.
Just, I was, though you had a comment, it was about the dusky pink colour. That whilst it appears to be a house style of this company, they haven't followed that in Alesbury. Was I understand, I understand it's a charcoal grey finish there, so if they can do it in one place. High heat button. Okay, is it reasonable to put that into the mix?
Hmm, yeah.
What do members feel, John?
I have no problem with the colour. I was just going to say that the depth of the wood in the town. I'm guessing maybe they chose it because it's opposite the old jet.
They also like words ending in O according to the agent.
It's in the report, John.
The very good point that Catherine makes, you know, Verdetto isn't, is verdict in Italian, nothing to do with the old general, which is normally the parking drunks late at night. And normally people who were convicted of their offences would be sent down to Alesbury, but.
Ponder order, this is relevant to the application help? Do we have a say on their name?
No.
We can try. Yeah, we tried before.
Anthony, you're proposing then that the colour change up? Would we ask them to?
Yes, I mean, I, I thought the feeling of the meeting was that perhaps it wasn't in keeping with the conservation area.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, good. Martin?
I was going to say, I'm quite, I'm okay with it. I think it's not offensive, it's subdued. I think it can bring some colour to. That part of town. I'm, I'm okay with it.
Same, yeah, same here.
Well, let's put it to the vote. Anthony's proposed it, I'll second it. But, so we're, we're proposing because of the signage, part of it being the internally illuminated fascia, the second part of your, of your proposals. That the colour is not in, in fitting with the conservation area of medieval times.
Yeah, for clarity, may I suggest that you split those into two separate, because I think there are some members who may oppose one part and not the other.
Let's do, let's do the signage self first with the internal illumination. Post Anthony, seconded by myself. John? All those in favour? That's unanimous, and then the City Clerk suggests the second part, and obviously, that we asked for the, I'm sorry, when, yes, you weren't, you weren't there last time. Well, that for them, and I'm abstaining on all. That we asked them to reconsider the colour. Yeah. That's not benefiting for conservation area.
True.
Thank you. I'll second that. All those in favour? Right. And those, again?
Two, three, four. I thought you wanted the colour of pink and.
I'm gonna stay, um, common over, any exceptions? Robin, two two exceptions, so it's forty-four, yeah, the chairman casting vote, and um I'm. Sorry, Anthony, but I'm going to go with the.
That's all right, sorry.
Single mood of the meeting, um be happy with the colours.
Chair, may I ask, um which way does the left-hand door open?
Which that's one.
It's flat, so you walk in there.
Yeah.
That's not.
It comes out.
Really?
Yeah.
You know, it opens inwards, it opens outwards.
They they the stairwell ones open in outwards like that, but they do not up through into the pavement.
Oh, it's.
Because they're set back.
It doesn't actually show it very well, uh reset in that one.
It does on the other.
Yes, I see it on the other one, the hand, yes, okay, thank you very much. I was worried that it was gonna come into the uh street scene area.
Thank you. Um right, the fourth item is number thirty-three Chandelos Road. Which is one of the three houses immediately after St Andrews, between St Andrews and the primary school. Um the proposal is to convert a four-bedroomed house into eight HMO stock-contained units with shared facilities. And it also involves removing the chimneys. Um two things that jump out, one, the chimney is, the Buckingham society and ourselves have been strongly. Asking developers to include chimneys in their new builds, and here we have an applicant who wants to remove them. The second thing, eight bedrooms, and there's only two parking spaces declared by the applicant. Thank the terms of fight over that, just to remind everybody, Chandelos Road with its two schools. Six former parking at the Latin.
Yeah.
And other redprints, it was nearly always all all the time at the street outside.
Yeah, horrendous.
Right, then Frank first, then Martin.
Thank you, um I think we should oppose this um on the grounds of it's aimed at development, I think is the right term, or is it? Too too many people trying to cram into too small a space with no no parking.
Not just.
Sorry, Martin?
Um on a similar vein really, uh parking is a real issue, we can't have any overspill into the road. Therefore, I would like to see more parking spaces than the occupants, because looking at the layout there. You're gonna need some good drivers and smallish cars to get in. Um and that's not gonna happen, we don't want them behind each other because it's a HMO, so you know, you're not gonna get people blocking others in. So it must have, um and then of course we move on to my favourite of um of bins. Which um I I don't think is uh been properly thought out either. So at the moment, it's a it's a cross from me.
Thank you. Lisa, then Anya.
Thank you, um you'll have to remind me, Chairman, but did we not get told that the. That the university isn't lacking in student accommodation?
I've got that to tell you.
Yeah.
But. Because there were an awful lot of foreign students dipping off to come here during the little bit, I don't think they picked up as quickly as they were hoping. But they are hoping to get that picked up, and at the moment, I mean, the four hundred. Student bedrooms that we're gonna have on the Hartridge side doesn't look like happening. Anytime soon.
So it's just a hope, they haven't verbally said that they are.
They haven't got a forward plan.
Okay.
The purposes of the neighbourhood plan about what they're looking at, and it all seems a bit woolly.
But I I think that in itself is woolly, the fact that this is specified, it's for students, and yet we don't know. If they are, if they have.
They are, they are single bedrooms.
Yeah, well, it says that for students.
Well, it does actually say in the plan, in the design access statement, that the um. Units would be for occupation by students mainly and single working individuals who might require accommodation. I'll just add to what Catherine is saying, that the innovative Hartridge site, the university is, has said publicly it's going to be selling it. Um so that they can proceed with the station road.
Right.
Building which they've already got planning permission for for students, but there is, at the moment, as Catherine said, you know, there is a shortfall perhaps in student accommodation.
A shortfall for young singles.
Yeah, absolutely, can I also say I oppose it on the bins and parking grounds as well? Thanks for that.
Thank you. Anya?
The others, it's not student accommodation, it's an Airbnb.
Yeah, um the parking space, if it was just student accommodation, probably not every student would have a car, but we cannot assume that. I'm assuming that the bins would be shared for the house rather than each party having their own bins, is that not the case?
Well, the same applicant, different premises. Um when that came back from the officer, they were insisting on each unit having both green and.
Thought there was something like that.
Up on. And they were just sort of stuck behind the edge of front garden.
And my third concern is that a four-bedroom house converted into eight self-contained, eight self-contained units sounds quite a lot like overcrowding.
Yeah.
And so that would uh doesn't sound like good accommodation to me, I fully accept the fact that we need. Accommodation and also accommodation for single people, but this seems to be overdoing it a bit.
Yeah.
Karen?
But obviously, the thoughts are very much on the same lines. I mean, at the end of the day, this is a residential house in a residential street, which is clearly quite unsuitable. For HMOs for eight single individual units, and you can't escape that. For all the reasons that have been said, it was a house designed, I think, in the sort of between the wars, and um. Single university student accommodation laws within the university at that time, not within residential areas. And certainly this particular property, I think, I'm surprised I haven't heard comments from the neighbors, I was going to ask how the yellow nurse has gone.
And the chimneys?
Oh, definitely. And I think I said in the report that that's not an architectural den, but it's absolutely in keeping with the period of the house. And to get rid of them, there is no talk, seems to me.
The other, the other point that hasn't been raised, of course, is that it is facing the conservation area, houses on the other side of the road. And we have heard from heritage in the past that warehouses. Um are neighbouring conservation areas or other listed buildings, that they will take a longer look at.
No, there is no signage.
Uh three other points, well, not necessarily three new ones. Uh it says in the uh in the brief, the parking will be on a first come first served basis, which actually. Uh exacerbates more of a problem really. Um secondly, with within the uh eight rooms, they've got a shower and cooking facilities. So on the external walls, there's gonna have to be some extractor fan um knocked through, and that's gonna be four on each wall. Um. And there's no mention of upgrading the house to better insulation for our climate. Um emergency, and this will be an ideal time to do that if they are renovating it.
Catherine?
Well, it's something we can say in our.
Yeah, it doesn't only apply to nuclear places, you can.
Well, I mean, they are making it into a difference.
Yeah.
If they're going to be fitting kitchens and bathrooms in this, insulation.
It's a really instruction, yeah.
Well, I mean, you can't put a a shower and loo units and a whole kitchen in without doing something to the outside. And some of some of the rooms, the only window they've got is the one over the kitchen links.
Following your train, Martin, then we point out electric charging points as well, for any parking and grey water recycling, as as John remembers. Andy, first?
Yes, mainly the highway, uh should have a look at this, we're talking about eight parking spaces for eight rooms. And a look at the possession they're gonna cause, especially at the school opening and closing plan, with all the use, same as this. Uh and block everything else up, so I definitely think this is not a suitable building for eight.
Thank you, Andy, it was suggested in our briefing this afternoon that we should get the highways off throughout at eight thirty in the morning, on a turn, a turn.
Most of the wake-up coffee there, it's, it might be too early for them.
John, then Frank, thank you.
Um my hunch is this is already occupied by eight students already anyway, um this is my suspicion, but maybe they're not wanting to. Put it self-contained units would be built in the streets because they know they can charge a lot more without sort of that sort of accommodation. Um I agree with all the comments about it being overdeveloped and so forth, etcetera, etcetera. But I'm being pessimistic, even if we uh reject this tonight, my hunch is the shining answer. Well, okay, based upon previous decisions that they made. And I think really this provides opportunity really for us to have a conversation with the university. About cars and students and accommodation, because I know, for example, in Oxford. When students sign up to some of their more modern accommodations, part of the release they sign is, they won't have a car. Um so that I can see no reason why the university here, even you know, the nature of a market town. Shouldn't also be able to do that kind of condition on students um who come to the university now, obviously this is provided by a. Uh an organisation that is not university, but maybe it's something we could open up the dialogue with the university about. This is why there is feasibility to include something in, you know, the uh contract between the student and the university. But then to to, because there's no need for them with that.
Could I just, on this pass Catherine, but I believe the university has said previously, it does not support private.
No, but I mean, so many of our students aren't here on weekends, they go down to London, they go all sorts of things. They do have cars, they may not use them within the town, but they certainly use them to get out of town.
Yeah, but we're also reasonably well-connected on the transport to, you know, to Oxford, to the United States. Where there are mainline train stations and which is nothing else, so I I I just think. As you know, as a progressive, forward-thinking committee looking at these matters, particularly in the context of the of the next legal plan. We ought to be opening the dialogue with the university about this and seeing what they say, it may not be legally possible, but it may, so let's have that conversation.
And in answer to your earlier, it has been a four-bedroom HMO, in the sense that each bedroom as existing. Is occupied by one student, there is a communal bathroom, and all the downstairs rooms are communal facilities, kitchen. Internal living room, um what he wants to do is do away basically with the. Living room and tuck a tiny kitchenette and bathroom in each room. Top line possibly, and this obviously it reduces the amount of space in each room. But it's still above the minimum limits.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, anyone else?
Um I was just gonna say, first of all, can I come back to John, um about the um. Trying to discourage students from going class to university. Um my daughter-in-law, Kate, was going to university, she hadn't been able to get, gone with her car there. Because she um searched from um a great deal of anxiety um. Around because of her autism, um and she won't use public transport, she can't use public transport. Um I think to put a blanket thing in like that would be a contribution to um discriminating discrimination acts, um. The other thing is, it looks to me on this plan, there's actually nine beds in the um. In the place, because if you look at the um front right room on the ground floor, that looks very much like there's two beds, two bedrooms in there. I have had to zoom in on it on my. That's the ground floor, um front, front right room with the bedroom door.
It's equivalent to.
I mean, I'd say, I'd like to to to.
Okay.
Live and eat and sleep and work in a room that sort of size. Is not conducive to good mental health, I would.
Yeah.
Or I would do.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
We had a proposal from Lisa that we.
Chair, I do feel that there's nothing really on, at this point, there's nothing really on this agenda that that proposed. That would relate to that proposal, the agenda writing is purely about a specific property. What John is proposing is that we basically have an entirely new policy, and we want the university about it, I think that should be on the future again.
It can't be true, I agree, yeah, yeah. Times against us anyway, with with that, by the time we're back for the university, it's sort of been. Uh Lisa, your proposal, we propose this.
Yeah, fine, I'll second that.
You're ahead of me, yeah, okay, can we just hear your proposal again?
Just. Well, there was, there was various points, I I propose that we propose it on on the grounds of it being um overdevelopment.
Talking bins.
Right, yes, I remember overdevelopment. Hi, gentlemen, and can we also add into that, in the, we would propose a lot, lots of chambers, yeah. Everything. So that proposal background, seconded by Lisa, all those in favour? With the exception of Robin, that's unanimous, Robin, thank you very much.
Then. We're doing it.
Good. Now we move on to money matters. Nineteen Market Square, a double application which we can consider together, listed building application and. Signage application for what was Lloyd's Bank, this is to install the community banking hub, which has been a long time coming, but we're actually getting there, it's now in our hands. So anyone got any comments on this? Buckingham society, can you start with you, Karen?
We really have no comment, no objections at all. He's.
You're happy with the signage as well?
Yes, we are, yeah.
Good. John?
I appreciate why, but I think it's a shame that they would lose the black horse, you know, silished on the front there. But obviously, it's always banking and everything else, I appreciate that, and I didn't know where that sign would put in, but it for me is notable. And whether there's some way chicken, beef and s, I don't know, but if there's some way which the other banks can go, oh, heck, it's part of the building. That would be nicer for me.
Is it, is it surely not part of the fabric of the listed building, that that railing and black?
It's sixteen seventy-seven, so I was thinking size, yeah. No, no, that's just the back of the Buckingham and the. It was the Bartlett's thing, a Bartlett's.
That pen later then?
So the signage is not ugly, I can tell you the good.
Right, okay.
Um but the balcony is certainly after this.
The balcony is.
It's the landlord's business to sort out the back.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman, if they are going to take the sign of the of the black hole. Could we not ask them to donate it to the museum as part of the, part of Buckingham's heritage of the sign?
Very good point, that would probably have to be a separate matter, it wouldn't get part of the planning of the donation, but that's perhaps up to the council to approach the applicant.
We could always write to landlords and see if they'll leave it there.
Yeah.
And if not.
Good point, yeah, so um.
I mean, members like to suggest that we have this one instead.
Thank you, um having heard everything, just one other thing, of course, um it may, some people may regret the fact there's no. Eight, potentially no ATM anymore.
Hmm.
We didn't discuss that point, but actually, personally, I think there should be another ATM.
But then, we were discussing, reading this afternoon about how you'd service that, you're gonna have five different banks in there on different days, who's going to be responsible for it?
And we just hung around the corner.
Yeah, it's post office, yeah.
Yeah, and there is, of course, pretty close by the post office.
Yeah.
So you could have a sign in the window, sign the same ATM.
I think the best office puts some signs around there.
Yeah, Anthony?
Well, finally, you should mention those two words, post office, because on the picture it says banking hub, and then to the right of it, it's got a logo of post office.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're running it.
It's the post office back, yeah.
Yeah.
They're running it.
But they're not merging at the moment. But they're not merging at the moment, then.
No, there's a national rollout.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Oh, so the post office is the banking hub, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. As you'll see if you go into the library, where it is at the moment.
Yes, I didn't realise they were involved, that's all, yeah. Thank you.
Right, well, I propose then that um. We accept this with the provisor that we can we can put in, can we not?
Hmm.
We would like to see if possible black horse retained, if not, the replacement of the black, with the Buckingham swamp.
Yeah.
And the black horse denoted to the.
Yeah.
I propose that, Anthony, so I can do it, all all in favour? So, run accept, Robin.
I would just like to ask, now you've agreed it, uh would it be appropriate to um. Remember that the councils were putting to the scheme, effort to arrive to the organisation to. Um. Ensure that they invite our mayor to the ocean. Um. I think that's um important. Mayor represents all of us and um to make sure that if they're, it shouldn't pass the application, just go through our mayor's inviting.
It's not really an item on the agenda, this is purely about.
But that will be your agenda then?
I'll talk to them. I mean, we we can certainly look aggressive, but it's not.
Yeah, I just got a feeling.
The suggestion, Robin.
Because that boss was denied to the rest. We've got.
That's what, I started picking on the front page of the newspaper. I mean, not exclusively mine, but that's me, sure.
Just like you can hardly use a bit cross that should be taken out of the page three, which she'd like to be in page three.
Right, now just do the agenda very slightly, I need. Members to agree with the following, but item number eight.
What about item?
The funds.
Oh.
Item eight on Catherine's reports, this is amended plans discharge of conditions at nineteen Bridge Street. Somehow slipped off the agenda, so with members' agreement, we'll put it back on the agenda because it is. On the agenda under reports, it's on page. Um twenty-five, yeah. Mended. Plans discharge of conditions, um. My family have one. Yes, I was talking to the forty hundred road, so forty hundred road, previously the workshop. Um. The applicant has agreed to remove the fence that runs along the bridge. Um. Which is. A small victory for us, but they have not made any concessions about the sheds and the concrete slabs inside the property. Which could cause displacement of water and drainage flooding. The subs officer or the local flood authority have seemed to completely ignored everything that's happening there. And most particularly, they have not acknowledged that there's been flooding. Um. In twenty-nine, uh twenty-two thousand seven. Twenty twenty, when the river actually. Got to satisfy, it flooded this land and the tinjet road to Nelson Street, both ways from Nelson Street to Manor Street and some but mumbles rain. And the land around the blocks flats, and in fact it was so high that it even exceeded river gauge, so they could never determine exactly. How high it was. We had a decline from to comment from the subs officer, which um we agreed at the last committee was. Remarkable state, it says, given sort of how this town floods, and um we completely ignored it. So. It's up to members to decide, but um do you feel we need to go back yet again and say that we cannot. Effect the situation at the moment, because this land floods, it's going to cause problems for other people, neighbours elsewhere in the town. And we should continue to oppose it.
Yeah.
They never dip their toe in the water.
So that would be my proposal, seconded by Anthony. Any last talk on this? John?
No, I'm just voting.
Um. We did actually say in our last opposition to it that the environment agency and the flood authority offices can confirm that new structures have no effect on the flood ability. That other properties in the town, members might be minded to withdraw their opposition. That hasn't happened. It's not being acknowledged um in in this latest amendment. Um. I'm going to go further than just saying we should oppose this, we should call this in because this will affect the whole of Buckingham. And I think we we should call on our members, if heard tonight, the reluctance of three members to get together for the term, well, this is an occasion where we should to protect the town.
Yeah.
But I mean, as a town council, we can afford it.
Yeah, we can. Yeah, we need that. So our members agreed, if we, I propose we call this in as well, Anthony.
Hmm.
Thank you, all those in favour? Thank you, Robin.
Yeah, I just going to say, listening to that, I think it's um. The right decision to ask for members' calling. Um. A structure in the flood plain is a structure in the flood plain. And my concern with the. If this goes forward and it's allowed and it gets weight, that this could set a precedent.
Hmm.
And then further on, when we come to an application of bricks and mortar.
Yeah.
You may find that it's referred to as a previous precedent and accepts a precedent in the flood plain, which is um. Well, and of course, you discussed, chairman's made us aware of the universities. Informally of the university's ambitions to sell a land. The other side, which um by sections of that are in the flood plain. And um. I think it gives a sense with them to do, because then. It would all look rather silly whenever the town does flood again, which sadly will.
Hmm.
If if this is there, um the only thing is, if it does flood enough, it might float down to the university. Um. As it's more than maybe on a structure, so it might become an arc. And um, yeah, you float down the river, but it won't be nice for the river. Of course, but I'm going to call in, it's the right approach, hope you're successful.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you everyone for that, taking the vote. Right, now we can move on to the item I tried to jump ahead to. Members' permission, we will include nineteen Bridge Street as as an agenda item because it is in the report. Everyone in favour of that?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much, is that all right?
Yeah, that's absolutely fine, all the information, so I just got this.
Thank you very much. So this is submission of details, pursuant to condition four parking, part condition five, electric vehicle points. Number six, cycle parking, eight landscaping and ten bin stores. Um. The conditions eight and ten have been re. Are are not being discharged at this point by the uh planning officers. Because they say the landscaping does not meet requirements to be. Part of the area around the building, acknowledging the town. And the condition ten of bin storage goes into a lot of reasons why. Each dwelling must be provided with its own sets of two bin each, et cetera, et cetera, something we've already heard about tonight. Our own concerns are about parking bays, which are too small, that each parking bay should have um. Shared electric vehicle charging points. Um. Those, of course, are not part of discharge of conditions, those are, as Catherine noted, those. Are actually um. Where are we? What's the wording used, Catherine? Yeah, there's. They're compliant to the conditions, yeah, that's it. So, um, what do members feel about this? Do we? It's obviously in Limburg at the moment, because the applicant's been told to. Go and come back with better landscaping and better bin things, so do we continue to oppose it? Uh, Caroline?
Just a comment really on the landscape, which is marginally better. Um. But it's still really rather desolate, and it doesn't provide the residents with any amenities. Just a sort of block planting, um so it's not exactly landscape.
No. Could I understand, it doesn't, not only doesn't supply a meeting place, nor does it meet our policy D H C six, because people should have a nice place to. Out outside place anyway, um.
There's nothing on the back.
Yeah.
There's nothing round the back.
The meaning to add land for the revenue, whether a meeting or not. Um. So it's really, Anthony?
I'm just wondering if we could, because we can't say yay or nay, because it's not actually a yay or nay situation just at this minute, so. But before we note this and we await um the decisions, at which times we will choose to comment.
We just continue to oppose it until.
Well, okay, yeah.
I think. If we oppose it now, we will affect the decision that came, we're trying to go to the public offices. Draw a line under it and say, yes, fine, or whatever, and then come back, and we should do it now. And there is one. Pair of E B R, uh two of the parking bays, they're going to lay the cable for the other two, why can't they just make it? You can't ask, go and knock on somebody's flat door and say, have you finished with the charging point, can I, can you move your car, so I can put mine in there? I'm not just put, yeah, one for each of the bases it is.
Hmm.
Funny.
So.
Yeah.
I prefer, I propose, and then we continue to oppose this. Anthony, yeah, seconded, all those in favour?
Well, Catherine said, I didn't, why? I didn't, um, yeah.
I'm adding all that, yeah. Thank you. Sorry, all those in favour, just that again. So run accept, Robin. Thank you very much. Good, and we can go back to the agenda, which is um. The land east of Manor Farm, Orton Road, uh this is. We, they've got a mission for a solar farm which they've had for a while, they now realise they've got to connect it somehow with um overhead lines and. And they've put in an application which has no location plan, absolutely nothing. But as Catherine points out, it's kind of information only, we can't even. We can't, we can't read them, but I think it'd be worth us commenting, it would have been courteous to have seen some sort of plan, whether it's fourteen metre. Run of pylons or whatever it's going to be, at the moment we have no idea whatsoever, and if it's land inside our parish, John?
Uh, I thought that the meeting to note that it has taken between ten and fifteen years. For new solar panels to be connected to the national grid. There's lots of power metering pylons, so probably a lot of the last years, but many of them are not actually free to energy use the grid. So you've got lots of give, give, whatever, lots of energy. That for a variety of reasons, the national grid is not investing in sufficiently to actually connect the wall. So I I would say, yes, there are going to be, there are going to be new pylons, but heck, we need those, otherwise it can't function. So, you know, we're in favour of some power, we will stop, you know, oil and gas being used to generate power, so it can be self-sufficient. Um. I think we have to accept the pylons. And I think pylons are being redesigned, by the way, that sorts of new pylons on the F five are going down to uh seven seven, you know, again. They're now single stream, comes out in victory, you know, and not the old fashioned ones, like we did the other town. These are actually just very different to the salt, and I think quite attractive, but they've got to happen.
Yeah, to be clear, John, we just entered the application, we have to say yes or no to it, purely for our information, but what we're saying is it would have been courteous if the. Application had just given indication of where they are and what they'd look like.
They probably didn't know.
Make a point you make about the. Too much power, because I've got friends who put solar panels on their roof and have been told it's going to be five years before they'll take. Take the power for the national grid.
Well, even for solar panels?
Well, they can use it in cells, but National Grid says it's got a backlog of them, but.
I agree with you.
Well, it doesn't matter. They're not in this county, they're in in East Sussex. Anyway, so do members wish to raise the fact we would?
I cannot. And then I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, we would like to see what's going to be coming there.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you very much, okay. So let's start that one. Um. Two to three applications, um both of which are subject to separate due to climate constraints, there was. Made more from Avenue, where a four-carriage of a core, a roof. Barrier has been proposed to to mitigate. Any more damage on on a nearby house, um. Everyone we emailed agreed to that, that's an oak, it's going to protect the oak as well. And Bostock Court in West Crete, this is overhanging branches from a number of different trees. Um. Which is basically pollarding and reducing overhangs to minimise risk of branch failure into old school court. But still maintaining the string in the one Bostock Court, we have no problem with that, the Buckingham society and our tree wardens have responded to that, that's just really for information. These things are very time sensitive, we have to quite often agree these between planning meetings. Um. Planning decisions, item seven, just to note, the following decisions, um. Eighteen Catkin Street, where a conservatory which we opposed on the ground and declared would be an overhang. And that we're concerned about the party's real access. Have been approved, but with the conditions that the proposed development is to be entirely within the curfew of the application and there should be no overhang. The applicant should be aware of entry requirements governed by the party warland. So we've got what we wanted in the end. Um. The other one was four West Street, which has now been given permission to Greek restaurant, even though opened a week before. But it's permitted, but the main concern here is um. One of our main reasons about it being there was because it's a takeaway that they'd be parking on the double yellow line. What happened on Saturday, I had to queue up in West Street because there were two cars on the double yellow lines getting takeaways from this new restaurant. And it was blocking the traffic back down to the uh to Stowe Avenue.
Ah.
But um, you know, it's unafraid, we told you so, nothing we could do, Andy.
And they don't seem to have learned from Domino's. Yeah. They're going to find they're still parked.
Yeah.
It's like a character, isn't it?
At least we can prove that, so that by putting the the flower tubs in front of the town hall.
Yeah, but they're still parking by pedestrian, um back right, right opposite.
Yeah, well, that, that of course becomes a police matter.
Yeah.
It's six penalty points now for parking on pedestrian crossings, so. John?
Well, I mean, I know, I think, I don't think it was one's issue, but certainly he was talking about it, supposed to put outside. What was the old Lloyd's Bank ATM. Um. Is there scope, I know that the pavement is, you know, there, it's going to. Is there scope for some sort of pavement infrastructure that would stop people parking in the pavements?
Yeah, it's not.
Or is that not feasible?
It's all asked by Lloyd's, it's asked very long.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Lisa?
Just to say, when I did um. Uh, the route for the Swan Trail on my new scooter for Sam, um the curb by, um, what's the system there? That, no, bottle of wine, yeah, it's really bad, so it's, we then encouraged cars to. Use and parking it become much, much worse, it's really bad there.
So the um, yeah, there's nothing more we can do about four West Street now, we we did our bit.
Hmm.
Um. Yeah, under of seven two, planning spectrum decision, it's thirty-three Willow Drive, where the applicant wanted extended curfew to allow vehicle access. To touch the road by putting his own block paving in by approximately five square metres, it went to planning. Inquiry and has been turned down, the inspector dismissed it, the office, the public book park is not within the curfew to the house and therefore cannot be committed development. So he's lost that one, which is good, one of the ones we opposed. Um. Which brings us to item eight, Buckinghamshire Council matters, new documents, other information from Buckinghamshire Council members present. Anyone being here tonight, being in the council, Robin, start with it, Robin.
Um. Firstly, um, well, thank you for the chance to speak. You'll see, um, it's been hard, um, not speaking for so long, um, um, I thought it would. Um. What what I was going to say is, you'll see there's a response um from the cabinet member, it's Strachan, which we'll discuss. You'll also see their response from the cabinet member Gareth Williams, one big in respects to developments. And how we look at going forward, which rather fits with, um. I've darkened these questions at the very same time that we took a motion through council. And which Buckingham Town Council agreed unanimously, well, not quite unanimously, um, one abstention to um to pursue this, so um. I think those, they're interesting, nothing else to realise the um. The difficulty there is for both parties, and the interesting one on the flood comments is, is. Which is a broad question, because we weren't the only community who were hit by the flash flooding, it was quite wide. So representing many places, I felt I had to do that, and I'm not a hundred percent sure the response covers that. Then there was the question which is to do with plan, which you might be interested in. Um. My valued colleague, um councillor Stuart Wilson and I, who's an independent councillor. Um. Took forward um a motion to try and get some purchase on. Um. Basically, the opposition members being involved in the. um, basically the opposition members being involved in the buck drafting of the Buckinghamshire Plan. Well, despite our willing and best efforts and, and to do so, we revised that we weren't the right people to be involved in the draft and the Buckinghamshire Plan. We revised that they had all the expertise they needed in the controlling party and we revised that, um, that they'd won the election and that gave them the right to design the plan. I don't think that actually was what the election was about, but it went on and we had a charming conversation, exchange of views, to which I finished it off with asking for a recorded vote. Um, so, um, after the pleasantries were exchanged. Now, what that actually has said in that plan, now the, the controlling group have voted to say that they control the development plan. Houses which are put in the development run are theirs, because you may not be aware that the subgroup which they set up this, the cabinet members, the chairs of the planning committees and the senior planning officers have now decided with the support of their members in a recorded vote, that they don't need any input in an official way from any of the members. And that was supported by all the opposition, um, members and that went through, um, with a recorded vote. Then to be fair, there was another motion, which was very interesting, pertinent in discussions these council, um, the other opposition group, um, put forward a motion to do with twenty mile an hour outside schools. And that, um, apparently was vigorous and irresponsible and such like, and, um, and you can watch the webcast to see how charming that debate went. Um, and, um, it stretched beyond the limits of what was reasonable, I should imagine. Um, but basically everyone's fault but the councils and they were irresponsible for asking for a twenty mile an hour limit outside schools, which I think we would have supported as a town, you would have supported in town council. I definitely supported the principle of it on the night. Um, so we lost that, um, to be able to progress that. I think that was a reasonable thing, that any reasonable person would think that a twenty mile an hour outside school perhaps was a good thing. And it would take a while to impose. Following that, there was also another, uh, which is really to do with planning and, and the way scrutiny is done. Um, we attended a scrutiny training session, um, which I, you know, how keen I am on learning, um, uh, after attending the scrutiny training session, we learnt that good scrutiny involves, um, the trainer, the training session advised us that we shouldn't pre, um, to, scrutiny shouldn't involve a matter of noting reports. It should, it involve a matter of pre-scrutiny of reports on serious matters. Now, we put a motion to council, council, us and myself, um, trying to tease out a bit based on the L G A advice, based on um, good governance, based on, um, the common practice and the fact that this is actually law in Wales, um. No, um, that didn't get acceptance, which is rather trying to get, how I call it, a footing to the door to be able to not influence, but to be able to have a voice on all these things about how to get good governance and good scrutiny in the council to improve, to make sure that things aren't predetermined. Like if a cabinet make or the planning stuff that we have, there's a policy that comes to council and goes to the government instructed committee, then that becomes a, a matter of discussing the policy that cabinet has agreed, not, not whether the policy is the right policy. So clearly that doesn't work, um, within the council. Apparently it's much better to be told what to do rather than influence what to do, um, which you see to follow the train sport at the moment. Then following on from that, you may be interested to know that, um, which is slightly more positive, um, which will affect many people in Buckingham, um. I was fortunate enough to work with some people and councillors, um, from South Buckinghamshire. Uh, and the report that we drafted on, um, trying to improve dementia care was pretty broadly mainly the recommendations affecting the council were accepted by cabinet and the, and that, so what I'm hoping is that will make a small difference to the way family, we all know families who, who have a member with dementia. We know of people who have members with dementia. So that was a good piece of work and they accepted that. Of course, the local authority bits are more difficult to, um, I mean, the health authorities is a bit more difficult. What I have listened to and, and there is a question was asked at the growth, um, two things you need to know, the council's likely to bring forward a growth and infrastructure stroke H A S, which is Health and Scrutiny Committee, to look at section one O six, stroke seal contributions out of new developments, to look at how best to apply that, that being that health being, um, under the H A S and growth and infrastructure select committee. Now what, we aren't sure of how they'll make that, whether that would then become another subgroup um, of people not involved in the opposition, um, because why would the opposition know anything? Um, um, as they're only elected on the same basis. So we'll see how that progresses. Um, I'm of course going to put my name forward if, if it's all possible. Um, on the other matter, it might be interesting if you get a chance to look at the growth, the Buckinghamshire, Oxfordshire and West Berkshire scrutiny committee. Councillor Stuart Wilson, um, came and asked a really good question around how they're going to manage um, like Dr Circus and, and things of the health. Now, the response he's got, I think I shared um, or I can share, um, but it might be a body of work either for this committee to look at or, or the environment committee to look at, because it is key on how the health look at. What they haven't answered is my second question in the council, which I'm waiting for it to ask in the committee, which was, they didn't provide a matrix on how to do it. But we have been reasonably busy, um, and, um, and one of the things I find that there is a sort of can do attitude between, um, members of the opposition in the sense of how we broke scrutiny and worked together to do good outcomes. So, um, I could go on for another hour, but I don't think you need it. Um, I'll, um,
Thank you, Robin.
I'll hold back for that.
Lisa would like to ask a question.
Um, I just wanted to say for a minute, our thanks for Robin, for asking all these questions and getting responses, please.
Absolutely, yeah.
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 I do enjoy it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Robin.
Okay.
Also, while we've got Rob, while we've got Robin here, um, two questions he's asked. Obviously, the first one, which was about two origins, infrastructure weekend, and very full frank discussion about that at the full council, as you remember. So thank you for that, Robin. That, that covers it. But I think probably what we might want to say something on is the, the flooding. You asked the question about more particularly Chendry, but you didn't include the, the Buckingham area and Walker. Um, are you happy with the response you got about that?
I, 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 I don't know whether the response is really satisfactory, but I'm, I'm always unhappy with the response because it didn't say exactly what I want them to do. Um, but I do think it says.
They should do.
Yeah, well, you know, they should do. It sort of gives you an answer of what they're likely to do. My concern is that how we deal with this, whether that's something which I think this response should either go to be looked at, see if there's another question to be asked by the environment committee. Because this is only finding information. It's ready to use your knowledge and experience to know where there's another question to go, because I'm representing as a councillor, I'm represent, trying to represent more than my own view. And so I think that with the guidance of the two chairs of, um, environment and the, um, planning committee discuss it, whether it, it should go on for further discussion because.
Well, I think it does definitely, it should go to the neighbourhood working group.
Yeah, and I, that's what I'm seeing guidance. If, if you think that's where it should go, members think that's where it should go, I'll be guided by that. What I'm conscious is my view is my view, but I don't think in that context, I'm not um, I've got other opportunities to express my view, but I need to represent everybody's view, really.
Thank you, Robin. Good. Thank you very much for your thoughts. Yeah, I'm hoping while we're on the subject of flooding, do you want to add about what happened at?
Yes, um, last night I was, um, in my, um, capacity as a delivery person, as I'm going to answer this phone. Um, um, ended up down at Kenford.
Bless you.
What I have established today is that a pump broke and the Masonet area in the block by the road was flooded. Um, and which is another distress for the residents down there and, and, um, and quite, quite, um, quite alarming. What I do think that, um, bless you. Um, what I will say is that, um, the fire, fire, firefighters turned up and had a jolly good discussion about my demeanour and, uh, which was much fun, but I did manage to get through and, and to Guinness while I was down there and the fire officer used my phone to talk to Guinness about where it is. There's some aspects to that that I think I need to follow up. And my concern is these residents seem to suffer more than their, their share of problems and, and not to tell you what happened would be wrong. Um, so I, I, I am concerned about that. Um.
Robin, you are aware we've got an outstanding planning application meant to block off the, the sluice.
Yes, um, I think.
Concrete it in, is that going to?
I don't, I'm, this will not make any difference to that planning application. This is an internal maintenance issue which flooded.
Did they get it sorted that night, like last?
Um, my aspiration is, um, that they will respond to me, but they have no legal obligation to respond to me. So I would probably talk to the chief if I get a chance tomorrow, on Wednesday, the fire authority and ask him to get a response because they can't really ignore him. Um, and because I do think that my concern with all this is that the building is the building, the residents are our constituents, and I don't think that they're having a fair crack at the whip. On a positive but not positive note, you will know that, that today, um, at one point, the drain cover come off, which I know the town council reported. I spoke to the local technician this afternoon, and then I got back to him today. Police were really fantastic. They blocked the road and allowing me to put the drain cover back on. Tonight, there'll probably be some tarmac put over the drain cover. The world keeps making musical, um, noises.
Was it just going on?
Yeah, because it came, it came off completely and, and was sat up in the air and, um, and the police stopped the traffic because, um, they couldn't let anyone go around it. And, um, so apparently, um, that belongs to Anglia Water. So Anglia Water are going to come back tonight and they'll do a temporary fix, which will probably be put as tarmac over the drain cover so that it doesn't come off. So, um, I'm hoping that's the case. He had a technician, um, somewhat stressed with it because he couldn't get into the road. So, so that has been done. And, um, but on another matter, he did, you will know, um, councillor Davis and, and I, Fran Davis and I were, were, went out looking at some issues to do with residents to do with flooding. I have been assured the day after the technicians phoned me back that those residents who were affected, um, by the flooding, because I've been pursuing it. Um, and, um, we'll get a letter, I believe, or an email now telling them that they're going to raise a job of work to do with the drainage outside their properties. That, so we've done that. I mean, that, I mean, it was, I have to thank, um, councillor Davis because she pointed out that we should really go and look at some of this stuff. So we did and, um, and it was useful.
I think Fran would like to add something.
Can I, can I, um, I'm giving details now, so I'm sneezing, but I've heard one raised to me.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Lisa?
Yeah, um, I wasn't sure. So did the flooding last night get sorted so the residents, but all the water got sorted out?
I think when the tank had emptied, there was no more water to come out and went down the drain. But what this is, this is a issue within the building.
Oh, definitely, that's.
Unfortunately, it never got, I don't believe it got into any properties. So that's good. But when you have the residents down there and they've been flooded so many times.
Yeah.
And they've had damp and got everything else in their property. If you can understand, they're alarmed.
Yeah.
So, um, but I do think it's something that all of us round here, please, try to monitor it, um, because, um, I don't think they're having a fair, people aren't particularly pleasant in sometimes how they express themselves about there, but, but, um, but it's a mixed accommodation of both private and rented and, um, and that's not how it should be, is it?
Thank you very much, Robin, for all your reports. Could we move on then to item eight two, which is a comprehensive note that Catherine took from the eleventh of July cabinet meeting on adoption of steel in the northern part of the county. It's, it's so fragrant to see, it's only not to have to have it known, Catherine. And of course, we, you will be aware that silver's going to be. Yeah, silver's going to be presented at this, um, uh, planning update committee, which may or may not be taking place tomorrow afternoon. More on that in a minute. Um, update is from representative of the outside bodies. We have none at the moment. Anthony, nothing on?
Nothing at the moment, yet.
No, thank you. Maybe at the next meeting and Robin.
Good to have done that. Thank Catherine for their notes of it. Um, I popped back out to talk to my colleagues who just put the report together, um, to do with, um, dementia. So I was just asking them, they thought it went. I missed that and I'm great with Catherine rising it. I think that we do need to, um, establish what does that meeting's taking place and we learn what it is and what, what the ins are on the seal. Because my view is, I go through the chair and get the, on the offices, is that we should have a twenty five percent and, um, as a neighbourhood, made neighbourhood plan. And if they bring the policy in to make sure that the policy counts that. And also, of course, um, the Buckingham neighbourhood plan has some distinct policies around affordability, which may differ to the Vale plan, but will be somewhat underwhelmed by the, if they're going to introduce the same policies as in Iwica, which is thirty five to forty, then thirty to forty percent. But we need to establish whether this is going to make any difference because still is, still will deliver affordability numbers. And the reason I say it, if they're going to say that, yes, we're going to apply seal, but only on a twenty five percent affordable.
The twenty five percent is the money that we get from a seal contribution. It's not the same percent of affordable house.
But what I'm just trying to express, and not very well, is the Vale plan expresses a twenty five percent affordable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I would suggest, Robin, we're jumping ahead of it. This meeting's tomorrow and they're going to present this, their, their suggestions to the. Make this my thing for the next planning committee meeting on, on the future of Sill in the county.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, Buckinghamshire, Buckinghamshire Council Committee meetings, Northern Buckland area council on the twenty eighth of June, strategic site council sixth of July. Um, the growth structure and housing select committee on the sixth of July, there's a report from the planning clerk on member engagement. Planning out, thank you again, and except thank you for your work on that, Catherine. Anyone, any questions on that? Or just acknowledge it.
No, thanks, Catherine.
Yeah, I know it is.
Thank you.
Just to make the point through you chairman, that if it happens, as I believe it's going to happen, there is indeed select committee or subcommittee, depending on how things go around health and growth and infrastructure. It's something that I think with the work that the council's doing on the made neighbourhood plan, that we should note that work.
We already have, it's already all been included.
Yeah, so that we put our, use those questions opportunities. I know the chairman has written questions. Sometimes it's lovely if you turn up because it sends them all a giddy, um, if somebody turns up to ask a question. It's always good fun to watch, remember them, um, come and ask us. They get all a bit giddy with that and it's cited.
Yes, it has been taken into account. Catherine and Sheena are keeping a close eye on this.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and finally, Temple for Transport and Environment and Climate Change Select Committee on the twenty second of June, nothing to report as far as Buckingham is concerned. Um, enforcement, um, to report, I mean, you, it's a little list here in front of me, starting with the town hall.
Oh, that's what I was going to say.
Well, you will be aware, the town hall, um, which is a, a great two listed building with seventeen eighty four brickwork, um, has had signage erected, it's internally illuminated signage. Um, in twenty thirteen, when the Villas Hotel, then the owner of the town hall applied to do something similar, they were told by the heritage officer it would never be approved, so forget it. And it was, and, um, then when this work started a few weeks ago, the manager of the Villas Hotel went public on the Buckingham matters Facebook. So we fought for a long time for this planning permission. We finally got it.
Nice.
Caroline?
I mean, well, I think, I agree with you, I should be here to, maybe theory about this signage.
Um, it's, it's awful, isn't it? But what is, what is really disgraceful is there doesn't seem to be any attempt at planning up. Conservation area, great for this building. I mean, it's, it's really.
No, it, it also, it looks, when you drive here around. It looks a scheme. It doesn't look like it's actually, but that's because the building is, is, it, it draws attention to the fact that, um. The, um, right hand side is missing that bit, isn't it? Um.
Well, Catherine, Catherine amongst others, Catherine amongst others has quickly noticed that you tried to get enforcement.
I, oh, and while they were still putting them up, I tried to get help from the parents job. It's. Stop it. I got no response. It was just voicemail. And a week later, by the end of last Monday. We were four pants around lo- long enough for the lights to be apparent. Um, so we reported that, yes, they are haloed it. So when the whole problem just went straight to enforcement, we're going to ask it like. Still talking on Facebook. I mean, what's he still doing on there?
So could you tackle them again tomorrow? I mean, obviously we need to fight this. I can't imagine that. If there weren't being enforced against them, because it goes against everything.
Yeah.
Really, really all hell's.
Well, um.
You get time belting.
They were, they were saying how much, how. They are suing their enforcement cases. Clearly this one hasn't got to, to where it, um, it is. If you were. But that you have some time this week, send it to me. I'll, I'll write to the gentleman who told me how well they're doing. Um, and ask him whether this is doing well, um. Because quite frankly, i- it is, there's only one or two iconic buildings in the town centre. Um, and this is one of the iconic buildings and, um. This isn't about their planning application at all. It's about, um, enforcing the right for the planning for it to actually determine that application.
Sure isn't it? Because there is no one.
So we're not actually predetermined anything. So I, I do, I do think that I'm happy to, um. With the guidance of the planning clerk to take that up.
Well, I, us, Robin and I thought you can read after we left the meeting this afternoon. She couldn't believe it. She realised there in twenty thirteen and they said, no, you'll never get that. Anyway, um, next item on enforcement, brethren deleting house. Coming up there tomorrow. This type of thing, they're putting over back all over again.
The thing is, you don't, you only get an update if they close the case because there's no breach. Or if it's planning application and then they'll kindly let you know, which I will already have found out. Um, you, you don't get progress updates. They don't sort of say. We've written to them and they've got until next July, or we are considering an enforcement notice if the quality is not enough. You don't get that kind of information. And they, they were all over the working forum with the vendor ones. Um, about how enforcement is now up to strength and you're going to be able to follow things. You can't because it's. Nothing between application and finalisation with. And no tick box in between saying we've done this and we haven't had an answer to this, so we're going to do this. Nothing like that. And it seems to me that it's not much consistent.
Right. Also, um, you're all have noticed graffiti that's appeared on the end of the, I mean, over the, not the Marcus's building. Again, that, that has been reported. Back to Buckinghamshire.
Well, one of them's really quite reasonable, I thought, but then. But then perhaps I was looking at it from an artistic point of view, not from a analyst point of view. The other one I thought had no redeeming features. But I did say, well, I thought it was quite, thought it was quite interesting, but, um.
It's quite worrying how high it is up there.
Yeah, I was impressed. I mean, I, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't, if I'd have tried to do that, I, I would have fell off.
Blame the window cleaner.
I'd have fell off if I tried to do that. I don't think I could.
And then finally, my fourth enforcement item here is the Borton Road Roundabout where Paragon signs are still up. I think six months we've now been complaining. People are now calling it the Paragon Roundabout, which the estate agent can't, is paying for the roundabout, can't talk that here, but we just remove it.
I thought we could.
We've got powers within our, to remove them.
Shall I have a bow?
Unless they are passing to the fence, then.
Because we did get those powers given to us from a move on warrant.
We can move them provided it doesn't damage the property. And so if they padlocked it to the fence, as the people upper balding did repeatedly. We cannot force that padlock or hold cut away or anything like that because it's not our property and we will be down there.
Take your nails out.
So the town clerk is offered to, then we'll, you can have a look. Thank you very much. Right, anyone else got any enforcement matters?
If you can look this side, Robin. I did ask whether it's something we should have on the agenda because I seem to have a. One of the things that I seem to get, and they're not actually like planning enforcement, but they are. I seem to get quite a few of these environmental health things. I've been doing something in Western Avenue lately or at that end of the town. And whether that's something environmental health issue stuff, whether it's something members should have the opportunity to.
Like what?
Rats.
This is the planning committee.
Yeah, rats. Whether it's something, something which should be done by environment because. Yeah, though I do with stuff, other members here have got the same interest in the town.
We can sit in the minutes, obviously, environment, there's, there's a lot of the environment committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, I just wanted to ask, is there any type of enforcement that is relevant to maintenance of front gardens? Uh, the proxy question I have in mind is, is just next door to, um. Is it to the yard?
To the yard.
And.
Not getting bothered with the saying it.
It's, it's, um. On the high, on the high street and the garden is practically taking over the house.
Oh, yes.
We had it on the agenda last time, didn't we not have it on? Planning agenda, the, the house next to.
Two up from, uh, beyond.
A yard. I'm sure it's on our last agenda.
Oh, that one.
I think, I, yeah, I think somebody asked a question of like, what might she hear about it? And then we still suppose it's, uh.
Bear in mind, this meeting is public and I know the town clerk will get a little bit.
And my question is, is that relevant to enforcement?
The county council can serve a notice for an unsent, for an introduction. But I've forgotten which department it is. I would have to look at my crew sheet. But they, they, I mean, we, we can do it for hedges, things like that. But if it's front garden and they've got ten foot level that they send out to the, yes, oh no, we have to do something about it.
Could be a bit, Catherine.
Yes.
Take up. Thank you very much. So another important. Martin, do you have?
Just on a similar vein, um, what about, uh, foliage over a. Path, a footpath.
You can recall that one, it's much straight.
Yeah, you can do that yourself.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Yeah.
That's something important about it, of course.
I don't know.
If it, if it's somewhere within the town, then leave and send it like that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, so.
And where? I need to know that.
I would suggest if you report it on Fix My Street, then they'll go through all the processes.
If it's over a footpath, they will deny it's a street and they won't do anything about it. So leave, leave.
They'll report it to us.
Yeah, they'll send it to you.
And, and then it's all.
Thank you very much. Could you perhaps, you could let the town clerk have. Where your concerns are.
We talked to me tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, um, item twelve, rolling list updates, um, no changes from June for the first two, call and requests for. Uh, appendix I and climate licenses, no change from June. Thank you.
So it's a before release secretary.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
That's no means to anybody.
We covered that at the last meeting, of course. Um, item thirteen, matches to report, members to report damage to purpose redundant, signs of the town access systems and other matters. John?
Well, going on what Martin said, I walked on the Borton Road, um, today. And from the cricket club, more or less up to the entrance to the car park. Well, to the end of the, uh, the property itself was the Borton Road, um, chair sort of there. That part was completely overrun. I mean, it's a mixture of ownership of, of, of that, presumably the owners of the property that was the, the health. The owners, I was in Western Pound, that's what they are now. And also the other land that was reinforced, trees over the red one. So those three bits of land, assuming there's three bits that cover. The path is almost impossible. I took my little second turn along with me today and a couple of, uh, rambles away. But some parts of it, especially next to the, the old, um, health club, you, you can't. Some of these young people.
Could we, could we ask if Martin would kindly raise that with Lee as well?
You'll meet him. Well, we normally report this sort of something as an accident issue, but we.
No, that, 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 that is, that is strange.
That's a street, Mark. So that's fixed.
Do that on Fix My Street.
Yeah.
I, I was only going, I was only going to ring. Late for a voice.
Okay.
I could have brought it up in my trade and if it is, I'll have to think after these.
Thank you. Lisa?
And just to let members know that the, uh, tree that's on the corner of Ozy Way and John and Close is dead and I have reported it. Um, there's a massive branch, uh, fell down in one of the wind rain sessions that we had. Um, they came and removed that. I did it on Fix My Street and I came and removed that. Um, and it's, they, you know, got it in their order. I don't know if they're going to remove the tree or whatever, but it's dead.
Right, okay. Are they aware?
Yeah, I sent them a photo.
As well.
Yeah, I sent them a photo.
I think that will pick that up. Of course, Neil Passmore, there's no longer looking out for trees now. It's been delegated to someone else.
Karen, you told me it was dead. I, I didn't even know it was dead. And then Karen brought me outside and he said, look, it is completely dead.
Tree trees are highways.
Exactly.
Open space trees are neals.
Yes, that's really quite strange.
So if it's an open space tree, like, like on the greens.
Yeah, it's on the green.
It's, it's, um, it's a neal tree. They don't talk, they talk.
That's a problem.
I think there is a email problem in the sense that some areas don't know each person's email address. And they haven't been given them yet under the new shiny new company. So I think that some people have got different email addresses and it doesn't work. So I think that's something that they need to be made aware of. What I was going to say is that if you can email me these issues, I. Allegedly having a meeting sometime next week if I, if it isn't moved to a date again where I'm not available. Um, because we're having diary competitions, um, on who's most important. Um, but I think I should take those up separately and just on the point on the Borton Road. I am aware that there is a job being raised. I think Roger will be pleased to know that there's been a job being raised because. Borton Road doesn't cope with rain anymore and it's the main access for children to go to school. And I've re visited that discussion and, um, I do believe there's been a job raised. That doesn't mean. In the, anything's going to happen, but the drainage, um, issues along Borton Road, anyone who's been down there knows is that. It's really bad for children going to school. Lolly, a lollipop. Person, um, has to walk around the flood or through the floods quite often and. There's also the issue of the cricket club ditch by the fire station. So they are well aware of it. They've raised a job, but that doesn't actually mean that it will happen overnight, but if members see it, so you know that there's a job raised. That took some doing, but, um. But I will take those issues, if I can have them in writing, um, I, I, I will take them up separately because I'm. I might be able to, in my complaint meeting.
I've got a couple of matches to report as well. Um, I've had a complaint from one of my neighbours who lives in Hillsborough Way. Probably seen him about as an ability speaker and his, um. His retriever. He told me he got stuck in the tour last week. We were discussing. The, um, state of the refuse bins. He, he couldn't, he went in from the post office and then got stuck. We had to reverse with his dog out of the tour because he just couldn't get through. There's been a huge amount of, uh, rubbish in there, not just the bins, but people leaving footings, bags and everything in there. And, um. Buckingham Facebook, which, which Jordan's one of the. They sort of take us on, ran a big piece on it last week. What do we do about that?
Well, um, I got involved. I got involved. I was spinbarred. Couple of them around me. Um, and the rubbish was due the day. Uh, special trip. It was recycling and it wasn't recycling week. There were boots on it. They were overfield. I said to Amy, there is no way a flat could have overfilled in like that in one week. Because obviously it was recycling, we'd been involved. I think they won't enter. And she came back and said that they contaminated and needed a special trip.
Wow.
And I said, look, is it, is it possible that they could have bag collection like some of the more difficult members? You know, like Nelson Street has bags, Adam Turoh has bags because you can't get the bin down that verge to the, the lorry. And she's going to investigate that because if, if it was put out on a Monday night, collected on Tuesday. Then there would be six days of the week where you didn't have anything that's ruptured the chill. If you've been around on your scooter, you know, you've got to go out onto West Street, down West Street until you've got to drop Kirby and get back up on. If you're going to go down there, otherwise you've got to go the whole way around.
Yeah.
By Barclays and that way.
Yeah.
And we've been saying this for years because that porch that sticks out of number one West Street. Does mean that you're forced to.
It's like Candleford. It's the same thing as where, where Sandstone, this is what's going to happen if. You agree these developments and now you don't listen to us.
Thank you. Thank you for talking about that, Catherine. Um, secondly, Tindric Road speed limits again. They are, the forty repeaters are still not spaced out correctly. In fact, it looks like a couple have been turned around into the head on the lampposts. I don't know if that's kids doing that. They definitely haven't got. Required a number of. Repeaters to make it, make it a forty mile an hour limit. Do you have a, John?
Um, I was just related to that. Tell me a situation where my forty mile speed that stops just past the door of Roundabout. Which then goes back to sixty for about three hundred metres. And then goes back down to forty miles an hour again. When it comes to the roundabout at the end of the road. How ridiculous that is. Why was it just a forty? Carry on all the way through. In fact, why was it carried all the way through? It becomes fifty one thousand. Yeah, I mean, it's just ridiculous.
Well, of course, that was all done before the Tindric Roundabout was created. Give people a chance just to pass trucks and things and get that time where it's safe to do so. But the Tindric Roundabouts negated all that, of course.
Robin, I think the Tindric Roundabout, if I recall right, is a thirty, um, the Tindric Roundabout. It's thirty mile an hour on the Tindric Roundabout, the one by the.
Oh, it's four.
I thought it, um. Where it was thirty, um, but, but the.
That's thirty on the entrance to the new cemetery.
Yeah, that, that's what I was just looking at and which is interesting. So you get thirty into the cemetery, you can't get thirty. So you get thirty after you've passed away. Into the cemetery. So that's, but you can't get thirty before you've passed away. So you have to have forty then. Um, until you've passed away and then you can have thirty. So I don't know what that tells you about preferences for the living and the dead.
Thank you so much. But we've got one, that's one other item to report. This is, um. What do we do about this? The closure of the eight four two ones for the whole of the last. To be four week closure.
We all emigrate?
Anglia Water.
Go on holiday.
You walk the mains in between the Single Brook turning and the Great Forward Roundabout. Um, you're still obviously able to get to villages like Thornborough and Thornton, um. Go through the back of Single Brook. If you can, well, but do we need to say anything? As a planning committee stroke town council, the fact they're closing one of our main arteries to the east for a whole month.
Well, it would seem reasonable. That we contact highways to see if they can. Work constructively with Northamptonshire and Milton Keynes. Because there is a fact that much of the traffic could be re, if it's going to the M forty. Could reasonably re, being redirected down the eight forty three. Um, rather like when you have Silverstone, you send the traffic around the eight four two one. Um, rather than down the eight forty three, which goes by Silverstone. Um. But it would seem that, it would seem a logical route for some of the traffic to go down, um, because then it wouldn't be so many people. Coming along that road. Otherwise it's going to come down the eight four two two.
Yeah, that's, that will be the efficient of that.
Yeah, but it, it would be useful to, to, if they recover sign, you can get to the M forty because. Yeah, but it, it would be useful to, to, if they recover sign, you can get to the M forty, because the A forty three is a quicker way to the M forty, um, it, from, from Milton Keynes, and it is from here. And you can get from the M forty to everywhere you need to get your lorry by getting on at that junction, uh, what's it called, um, the other side of Brackley, um, you can get on there, so, um, Junction Ten, and you would get to Junction Ten exactly the same, and if you go, um, down the A four two one and go along Brackley and then pick up the A forty three. So it might be something that we could just point out to them, whether they have, whether that helps, a bit like Silverstone. We spent, um, when they, um, they had a new junction put into Silverstone, um, which has got a good story, backstory to it, um.
They did notice, they told that to the last council in the year.
Andy. Well, thank you, Jim, yet I can see the pressure on the road bypass from the Page Hill to the Blair, let's you round about. Yeah, I'm glad the schools are closed, but, uh, people from Burly Peace, uh, I'm never going to be able to get out. Or take a long time getting out, unless they turn left around the roundabout.
Town clerk, utilities, of course, don't have like the licenses.
When they're putting in a big, putting a new drain or a new ditch and they're going to close the road, um, I don't know what our options would be or what county's options would be if that work needs doing, um. I don't see a way that they can do it and help with the disruption.
Yeah, but it is.
Um, I'm happy to ask a few questions and, and speak to our colleagues down in county and see if there's anything more that can be done, but I am being, and it affects all of us, you know, we all want to get around. But ultimately, if I need to put in a new, a new silver, that's not exactly what the work is, then that's something that was, it's hard work.
Yeah.
But it is, um, would you like to leave it with me in form, I might have a chat and I'll see.
It's got water out each.
True. I, I was going, going to, um, say that my experience with these things in the past is that they don't ever utilize the entire time of the, um, closure, but they, they, they're not working on the site the entire time that they've got closure notice, of course. They tend to, to give themselves, um, longer, A, if the previous job is, is able to run. Um, so they've got, they've scheduled, there's possible made on scheduling. Um, I think the question, one of the questions, um, that town clerk could ask is, um, if they can, um, give us, um, further information on how long they actually think that they're going to be working on it, and keep us informed of what, 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 um, what timeframe that's gonna be over.
I will ask a question, I suspect I'm gonna be back down, David, for what I think.
I can't, I can't imagine it taking an entire month there.
Robin.
Well, it's, it's not the case, because they probably would need to borrow some money to do it, I'll be angry, water's still solid, but, and it.
Yeah, I think probably one of the better things about it as well is that the, the diversion isn't gonna be that horrendous. When they close the bit between the Tesco Roundabout and the Tesco entrance, it's a fifty-eight mile detour they're going to pass.
Oh, yeah, because I've put to McDonald's at night and I'd find them, so I can get you.
Anyway, thank you very much, no, 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 any others of those? All right, gentlemen's items for information, I'm gonna be very brief, but I'm aware that it's nearly nine o'clock. I'm just gonna report to you that this morning I and others received an invitation through MP Power to a Buckinghamshire Council Planning Environment Service Update Meeting tomorrow, the eighteenth of July, with just twenty-four hours' notice given. This is totally unacceptable, as many of us involved in planning have other commitments included. I raised it immediately with, um, Barks Helen Hogan, asking that as a matter of urgency, can this meeting be postponed until a proper democratic period of notice can be given? I've yet to hear back from her, and I raised it also this afternoon with Planning Cabinet Member of the Council, Peter Strachan, and Planning Services Director, Lee Bambrick. Neither of us yet responded. One of the principles set out in the Buckinghamshire Council Town and Parish Charter is to provide effective early communication with town and parish councils. Calling a meeting without adequate notice does neither. The meeting is tomorrow afternoon, um, I've discussed with the town clerk, the vehicle position, we're just gonna have to wait to see if it goes ahead or not. If it does go ahead, um, and it's not postponed for those reasons, then I would be looking at making a formal complaint in the future to Democratic Services, but if we just got to wait and see what happens tomorrow, it's quite unacceptable. I have been talking to Bower for the last week about why wasn't there the regular quarterly meeting in July? Melwold came back and said they told it wasn't enough business, um, and it was gonna be held in October, face to face down at Aylesbury, which is fine, at least we got our request to meet face to face, but, um, it was a fixed month count, and then suddenly this morning at eight fifty-seven, the email came through from Buckinghamshire, you got the same as in county as well, to say this meeting is tomorrow, I mean, totally unacceptable, Robin.
We obviously realize that what happened in ineffectual and in breach of all what they came to do. The important thing is, I need to know from a member's point of view, is, is the vice chairman, the chairman available to go, because if they're not available to go, then we need to send someone per se, because, um, wherever the information it comes out of that meeting, it must be reasonably crucial, as they wouldn't call it in such short notice. So I, I just need to establish my conscience.
The chairman can't, I already indicated that, the main item on the agenda is civil for North Bucks.
Yeah, and it.
Robin, Catherine and I were gonna go.
Yeah.
It's on, it's on the line, we say, so it's soon.
I was gonna say, I'd go cheer them up, um, um, but that wouldn't cheer them up, would it? Um, um. Don't be bobby.
No, I just, it's just really to let members know what the situation is at the moment, this is how we are being treated at the moment by, by.
I think somebody's made a big mistake, and I, I, I have a suspicion, because I know that some people weren't invited, because we had an SLCC conference last morning, and some clerks completely didn't know anything about it, we were, I was told about it on Friday, once, you know, the chair, asking for questions by Monday, and that's.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I've been at Bower the weekend, I didn't find out till this morning.
No, not, not the point, but, you know, I'm relieved for a new chairman that both, um, town clerk and clerk, um, we'll at least we'll get a report back, um, but I do think separately to that, I do think that we haven't. Depending on the outcome of that, perhaps we should agenda it for another meeting to discuss how we would.
Like I've already said, we're gonna do, that, that was a chairman's.
We'll gender the complaint.
There will be discussion on it.
Yeah, you know what I mean.
Yeah, okay, um, with that, date to the next meeting, Monday, the twenty first of August, uh, which we will give you proper notice on. Um, thank you very much for attending, um, and it's just coming up tonight a lot with that.
Thank you.